I've seen videos of them. When my dad owned Darlington's, of course, we spent a lot of time playing upstairs. It was a cool building.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I want to address a couple of things. First of all, this is the first time since March 16th of 2020 that we've met in here. And I can tell you, as serious as, you know, I took COVID and still do, and there's nobody happier than me that I don't have to run a Zoom meeting and preside over the meeting at the same time. But tonight, you know, we're going to continue to observe COVID restrictions. Part of the reason why we did decide to do this is because all of our council and myself are all now doubly vaccinated plus two weeks. And we do want to send the message that we can start to get back to normal once we get back to COVID. And so I thought approved to begin this, this way. When anyone's speaking tonight, if you wish to remove your mask, that's fine. We'll just put it back on when we're not speaking. The other thing is, I presume most people are here over the, over the Northside Homes LLC. So I want to make sure everyone realizes there is no action being taken tonight on that other than a second reading of an intent to annex the property. And I want everyone to be aware that if this, if the city council doesn't annex that property, then the decision gets made by the Woodford County Fiscal Court, seven of which eight magistrates don't even, aren't even voted in by the people of Midway. So it only seems appropriate that the Midway City Council would take that action. But of course, that only happens if Planning and Zoning makes a recommendation to the full city council to rezon the property, which is currently zoned residential. I think it's R1A or something. And the person, the people who bought the land have asked Planning and Zoning to rezone it to RFP or something like that. So I will tell you this, that the plan by Northside Homes LLC will be released in early May when they make their submission to Planning and Zoning. At that point, it will become public and we'll get that out to you. And then, once Planning and Zoning announces the date of their public hearing, which will be sometime in June is my understanding, we are hoping it will be at the Midway Presbyterian Church's community room so that the public can have it here in Midway. We're going to have it in Midway, but I'm hopeful it'll be there. I think their session is going to vote to approve that tomorrow night. At that point, of course, anybody interested can then certainly go and make their voices heard. Not that you can't deny it, but really, the most appropriate forum for that is the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, I totally encourage you to make any comments you want to make tonight towards that end. I just don't want anybody here thinking tonight that somehow it was some plan on rezoning. We are the victim of transparency in that we let the cat out of the bag early on purpose. We, I firmly believe that the public has a right to know when things are happening as far down the line as possible. What's happened because of that is that people have heard about it but haven't seen the plan yet. So they're jumping into probably what we all do naturally in the situation, jump into the worst conclusion we can imagine, right? So what I'm doing, and what I encourage anybody else to do, is to wait and see the plan. And when the plan comes out, let's hear it out. Let's ask our questions. And then if Planning and Zoning makes the recommendation to the city council, then once again, as you can do tonight, and also later on, appeal to those council members that will be voting on that. So I just want everybody to be aware of that going into tonight's meeting. With that said, I do wholeheartedly welcome any public comment. So anybody that wishes to make a public comment, please just come on up, state your name for the record. You can come on over to the podium and you can remove your mask while you speak if you wish.
No need. Thirty years technically, four years Army National Guard, military elements, I live on these two streets. Right here, above that property. I have, I have an extremely vested interest in this. Been in Midway thirty years, raised my, raised my child here. And probably from me left him, and I just want you to know that I'm extremely against this. Sixty houses in my backyard. When everybody flushes the water lines over down to Seabrook. I found out about this from the Freckle at the corner store. And there's no way around the river. Then I had to hunt, hunt down the two people that were going to do it from, other from another community. They come in here and smile, this thing in office.
I do have to interrupt. Ms. Bradley is from Midway. I just think that's only fair for the record.
One of, one of them married to the Patty Wilson.
Wait, hold on. I'm going to address an actress. One of them is married to Patty Wilson. Patty Wilson is the sister of Mrs. Bradley. She has accused herself in the process. Thanks. I am going to correct anything that makes sense.
This is how I see it.
Sure, I'm going to correct any consistencies. I'm going to do it all night long.
So I, I went to, I went to Patty over here and she wouldn't, she wouldn't say, she came down. Get down the sidewalk, we talked about this. I took, I took photographs of her about my concern with the runoff. And I had rented two granderoos on the home property. When I bring talk to them, I saw rendering of the proposed twenty house, first twenty houses that are going to go up to support the school. So I know what's out there. I've seen it. And I guess my point is, I'm getting, I'm getting all this information just, you know, peacefully. And I talked, I talked to neighbors around there that, you know, do not like this, that they don't like the way it's been handled. It's, I would appreciate if the Bradley brothers or somebody associated with them to come to me and say, hey, what do you think of that? It's, you know, we're, you know, we're going to make eighteen million dollars off of this. And the guy lives up behind the Graves House. I went and talked to him and he said he tries to, you know, buy property, you know, from a guy married to a woman. And so I don't know how long this has been the process, but you know, it's a, it's a concern. And then the red stakes down there by the corner store, know the family doing something with that. Of the Bradley brothers and I told them, you know, because I've seen the maps, that there's a gas line running on the east side. And I asked him, I said, if this store were to burn down, it's my understanding that you could not build a factory. He said, that's good. You know, so it's just like, it's just like out there when they're talking about putting the stockyards in. And also in this, this map appears with sinkholes. You know, so those, those types of things that I'm aware of, you know, sinkhole, gas lines. You know, the idea that I'm having to get this, all this information from a Freckle. You know, and you're talking, you're talking sixty houses up there. Talking, you know, we're talking major one. And the Bradley says that they hired an engineer that's going to fix all these problems. The technical, yeah, so I just, I just want you to know that I would answer all this. There he is.
Thank you, Mr. Heyd. Can I address something about the process? So when a person, any person is allowed, of course, to buy a property, right? When they buy that property, they're allowed to request to the Planning and Zoning Commission that it be rezoned. Now, I'm probably going to have a lot of the same questions you have when this happens. But as to the, you learn it from a Freckle and that's wrong, well, I don't exactly know how else that we could get information out differently. We released information to the local press on purpose so that people can start at least preparing for it. But until I know, that's why I'm confused about what, yeah, who's happening. Again, I'm not sure you're talking to the right people just yet at least, but well, when a plan is released to Planning and Zoning, it then becomes public, but they have not released a plan to Planning and Zoning. You just have to know about it because we released it. So I guess I just would like, I just want to address that. I just, that, that, that kind of confused me a little bit, but it sounds like
Well, my point is, one of my thoughts was that, you know, Patty Wilson came down to meet with me and screaming about this. And she said, she said, I'm out of this state, you know, it's family. Sent somebody down that wasn't her. You know, and I had, and I had taken over some lemon, my fourteen photographs that I had made up. I brought them here as well. Right? And, you know, and it's, and it's problem. It's a, you know, it's, it's manageable the way it is. But, you know, that water's running into, and I asked Bradley, I said, did the water run into the gas tanks in your store? Yes, it did. Many times. You know, so, so now you're, now you're going to just where is that now where? And I know we're working on that, but still one of the, one of the issues.
Well, thanks very much. Again, I, I feel, I've worked so close with Patty Wilson over the years. I've found her to be someone of nothing but integrity and fairness. In the first conversation I had with Patty about this, she told me she was confusing herself. So I just, I, I like her and respect her too much not to always get that in on her behalf. But thank you for your comments tonight. Anything else you'd like to add? Thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Marsh. I live at thirty forty-eight Northridge Drive. And that is the neighborhood that is adjacent to the proposed Bradley Development. My comment is about future development plans in Midway. Following the approval of annexation of seven point, seven point four eight acres of land off of Northside Drive from the future street, I would like to see Midway City Council develop and adopt a long-range plan to manage development and future growth prior to approving any zone changes for future development. That plan should outline requirements the city of Midway has for future growth and should take into consideration quality standards consistent with surrounding neighborhood as well as preventing new developments from turning into rental properties, ensuring a variety of price points in the development, meeting the needs of current older residents and any other best practices for maintaining quality neighborhoods over the long term. If Midway already has policies relating to future development, I'd be interested in knowing where I can find.
The confidential plan of Planning and Zoning, that, that's also a part of the Midway City Government as well.
Okay, so that would be the document that I could find on the
Yes, yeah, that's exactly what the comprehensive plan is for and what it sets up.
Okay, sure. Probably email you, because I don't know if I'll remember that.
We'll have to get, I mean, again, the best people to go to are Planning and Zoning, so you can call or email Patty Wilson. But if you send me an email, Tiffany, I'm more than happy to put you in touch.
Okay, and that would be Midway specific?
It's for the whole county, but it includes Midway as well. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is what every five years they do updated comprehensive plan. And it's very detailed as to what can go where and what, and so forth. So that's really, the document you're describing already exists and is, is available to the public. So if you just call Planning and Zoning, I'm sure they would be more than happy to send you a copy, either digitally or in a hardback cover. Well, I have an extra line around it, which I probably do.
I actually think we have one at the library. Okay, great. Yeah, I would be interested. Um, so carry on. There are many unanswered questions, not just from developers and planning and zoning, but from city officials. For years, we have heard that there's a need for affordable housing without defining what it is and without any data to support. The city also needs to address how you manage, how you, how do you plan to manage future growth so that the sense of community quality of life, quality of neighborhood and environment are not just maintained, but improved forever. The proposed timeline of due for the Planning and Zoning public turn is not that far away. And the city owes it to its residents to have a plan that responsibly addresses concerns. If a plan has yet to be developed, any zoning changes, I think, should be delayed until such time as a plan is in place. The city has very few chances to get new development right. And Midway residents will be living with those decisions of quitting back years to come. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh.
Thanks, too.
Any other public comments tonight? Come on up.
My name is Emily Teaback and we live adjacent to the proposed development. I know, as you said, we will reserve judgment until we see what comes for. One thing that does concern me again is the need for a needs assessment. If the public information put out is that this is planned to have a need and need for affordable housing. And as Ms. Marsh has read it through, you know, the bottom of my head is, who needs it? What type of housing is needed? I would strongly encourage the city council to consider that a community needs assessment specific to that be undertaken to determine what is needed. Anyone in business knows, you can think, you know, what's needed and be way wrong. So that, to me, is the main thing. Obviously, because we're adjacent, we have a personal interest in what happens to that property. That being said, I have an interest as a member of this community that we get it right. Because Ms. Marsh said, decisions need to be made with right reasons. And just because we can do something doesn't necessarily mean that's the right thing to do. So I do appreciate the transparency and the awareness and interest in this and look forward to talking more and bringing forth concerns and questions as we go through the process together.
And thank you, Ms. Teaback, and please do, please do take me up on that offer to send me an email or phone call if you guys are interested in being annexed and yourself, because again, you are not in the city limits territory. And that's been, it's been difficult to have areas in the city that aren't in the city limits because it's hard to provide services and then tell a couple of people they can't have that service. It's, you know, we'd rather not have to do that. So we're happy to bring you in. The downside to you being brought in is that you pay city property tax, which is one of all those mistakes as well. But I, but I do welcome that. I appreciate your comments.
As you said, as this evolves, it's part of their decision process too.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight? Any public comment? All right. Well, we have three items of new business to cover. They're probably really more probably old business. But the sidewalk project, the cost sharing project, we have put RFP out. So we'll be requesting bids on that project. There's currently eight separate sidewalks right now that have applied for the cost sharing. And I do believe we'll probably have another that we are able to nudge into doing it as well. So as soon as that bid comes back, I'll put it before you all for approval. Same with the road paving. We have an RFP out for our road paving. We're going to, again, do the aprons on First and Second Street. We're going to pave Martin. We just replaced the water line. We're also going to finish the Stevens Street corridor all the way out to cemetery. And we're going to pave the pavilion out at the, the gravel road out that we just built for the new cemetery pavilion. So that RFP will also be coming to you all here as soon as we have those bid openings, which are at the end of April. I forget the dates. If anybody's interested, just shoot me an email and I'll let you know. And then I want to give you all an update on the sanitary sewer project. That's what the green pipes are out of Southern, Southern Aquaman Farm, for people who are wondering. That project, we hope, will be just about wrapped up by now, but it was slowed down by an easement dispute with KU. That has since been resolved. But after the resolution of that, we rerouted our pipeline a little bit because basically utilities think they can tell everybody what to do. We just decided, you know, we could fight over this for a year. We just couldn't get this project going. But in moving it out of the current ditch, we, of course, encountered rock. So now we're having to start to get through rock to slow the project down. But we do hope to have it done by the end of fiscal year at least. I'll tell you, maybe sooner than that hopefully, but at this point, I'm just going to move those rollposts back as far as I possibly can, the way that project's gone. But some of the things that have held the project back are actually, remind us of how important that project is because that's the main trunk line that takes all sanitary sewer out to the treatment plant. And when it rains heavily, it takes a week to get back to work because of the INI, which is inflow and infiltration. And I know more about sewers now than I probably ever thought I would know. But basically what that means, that's extra water getting into the system. It's either from sub pumps that shouldn't be hooked into the system, or it's from more than that, just cracks in the pipes. And because of those cracks in the pipes on that pipe we're placing, when it rains now, now that the ground's open, we can see it, it takes a week for that flooding to slow down because that's how bad the INI is to that line. So every time it rains, especially some of the heavy rains we've gotten, it slows the project down. So that's why it's still an ongoing project, but it also reminds us of why it's so important to finish that sanitary sewer project. So we'll have it done by the end of fiscal year. And the Canadian contract is really what they have done so far is already shown that it's going to be enormous improvement once they have that whole line, especially one upgraded from fifteen inches as opposed to twelve. And then finally, we have the Tin Man here downtown, which is obviously an icon that we all want to see preserved and saved. But I'll tell you, it, it at this point is the city's probably most ever expensive art project because there's no need for that tower anymore. The, you know, the, the tower we use supports is at Midway Station. The pressure that comes in even from the water we buy is high enough that when the tower's gone down, residents haven't noticed the drop in pressure. They had it's been minimal. So that's a good thing. The bad thing is that the Tin Man is out of service, out of commission, and now looking pretty, pretty bad. So it's going to require a paint job, but the problem is it hasn't been repainted since at least nineteen seventy-eight because it still contains lead-based paint and it contains enough to know that was, that was the last time it was painted. Now, that's not a danger to the public as it stands. But we can't just go and throw a coat of paint on. After a more thorough analysis, that is going to require what's called sandblasting, which then requires an enormous amount of cover so that this, so that it doesn't get blown around, so that it doesn't land on nearby rooftops or, God forbid, it definitely doesn't land in the creek nearby. So that's at least a four hundred thousand dollar project on something we don't use nor do we need. So therein lies the problem that's going to be coming up for us. About something has to be done even this coming fiscal year. But, but down the road, you know, future mayors and future councils are going to have to deal with this problem. And so I think the better the way we start thinking about it now, the quicker we start thinking about it now, the better. You know, there are multiple options. One that I think, you know, we had talked about, what I think an idea that we'll come again is, is a we had discussions about the interns premium tax decided it was just going to have to happen too fast to happen this year. So we said we'll, we'll look at it again next year. That is one way to create a new revenue stream to pay for that. But another way is we could sell the tax. We, we could surplus it. We could sell it with restrictions. We can say things like the city of Midway still has to be the prominent logo on there. But the buyer can put their logo in a smaller way. We could do that. I don't know if we want to do that, but that's an option. I don't know if anybody would want to buy it, to be honest with you. I don't know. And I don't know the public would even want, want that. I, I just want you all to be aware that it's going to take some kind of other revenue source. I don't think it'd be appropriate to use current general fund money. I mean, our general fund is in great shape, as everybody knows. We've been able to do all kinds of great things. But, but, you know, that's a lot of money for something we don't actually need. And it's not in use. So I want you all to be thinking about that as you go down the road. And it's probably something that, you know, the next mayor after my terms of it in twenty twenty-two is going to have to probably leave the charge on most likely. But I think the more that we start to, you know, go down that road, the quicker it may be and the easier and less painful it will be to save that tower if I have to tear it down. I don't honestly see it torn down. I don't think anybody does. Now, I have to tell you all, that cost is about a hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to have to get creative because it's going to cost four times as much if not more to save it. So I just want you all to be thinking about that as we go. You all have any questions? Any, three of the things I just brought up?
And that, you said we don't need the tower, but can the tower be used ever again if it was repaired? Is it not repairable at all and not usable, or is it just redundant?
Good question. That, that type of tower is not used anymore for a reason. It's not really the ideal engineering for a tower these days. So could it be brought back? I mean, anything's possible. But I don't see a need for it. We, we get plenty of water pressure from what we have right now. The tower at Midway Station's higher, which is better. Like I said, that tower pressure's gone down and we haven't actually lost pressure in town because the water we're buying has enough pressure behind it that the, that the, what, what you may notice is almost minimal. So I, I think it's possible. I think it's, but it's going to be even more expensive than what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about essentially is give it a, give it a facelift so it looks nice. But to actually bring it back into service would be even more expensive and ultimately probably unnecessary.
This is kind of an adjacent question. We currently purchase for profit water for our community. Are there other plans to purchase water in the future that would not rise with the stock market? Or that tower was once filled by the creek? So do we have any, is there any advantage to looking forward into the future to not purchasing water at the same cost that we currently do?
Yes, a hundred percent. And that's why I have, as I've stated before, and we already have begun discussions with the Frankfurt Plant Board. And I know, I know the City of Raisals is interested in selling this water as well. We can't change suppliers until twenty twenty-five because in nineteen eighty-five, the city signed a contract with Kentucky American Water. It was a forty-year contract. So come twenty twenty-five, we can switch water suppliers. And I think at that point, the city should either the Frankfurt Plant Board or, or City of Raisals. I know Frankfurt Plant Board, if we could switch today, and we switch today, our wholesale costs would go down by one forty percent. So yes, absolutely. I think that should be done, but it just can't be done by twenty twenty-four. Well? Okay, we do have a couple of guests here present your topic, the event, permanent for Midway Renaissance for the music, Midway Music Festival, July twenty-fourth and twenty twenty-one. Now, Andrew Nelly and Alicia Hope are here, so feel free to come up, y'all.
Hi, everybody. Well, thanks for giving us a chance to chat with you tonight. So I'm Alicia Hope. Andrew Nelly, as Grayson said, we wanted to come talk to you about the potential for a Midway Music Festival this year. It's a project that the Midway Renaissance Board decided that they wanted to take on. And they asked me to come on board and help them make sure they were organized and have their peace crushed and nice daughter. So what we're looking at would be a, a one-day music festival that would happen on July the twenty-fourth with a combination of street closure and utilizing the courtyard. So what we'd like to do, I have gotten permission to use the courtyard already, so we do have that in play. So what we would like to do is put music in, put a musical, a small music lineup in the courtyard from twelve to four and then close and then close the lower half of the street from four to ten P M. For our larger musicians that we expect to pull a crowd to Midway. That's the general gist of our game plan. So does anybody have questions? Andrew, do you have anything to add?
Does the plan to have it in the park would mix?
Unfortunately, we.
That's mixed before I go on.
Yeah, I came to a realization that from a logistical standpoint, some of the things that we raised in the conversation that we had down at the park that day, it's, the thing that we're looking to do is, this is kind of like a tryout this year to see how it goes. And if it goes well, like we anticipated, well, then following year, maybe we'll move it into the quarry. If that gives us more time to work at that piece. But the street thing has been done, of course. We assume that that's kind of a, been there, done that already, kind of make it much easier.
Yeah, we would do it in a similar fashion of, obviously, the Midsummer Nights in Midway. And also logistical challenges and everything within the quarry. I mean, you need power, obviously, to have a music festival. So my understanding is that there isn't adequate power there. I mean, flash here, I'm going straight for it, so.
And my only turn would be the music for the Martin Street residents. That's kind of about my front yard, ten o'clock at night, I don't know.
Well, so we would shut down the stage and so the courtyard stage would only be happening from noon to four.
Okay, so the.
And then at four, we would move up onto the street. And the musicians that are gonna be in the, in the courtyard are not like big bands. Grayson has agreed this is for us. And then Leslie and Bill Penn are gonna do a performance. So, so those performances are not gonna be what you're thinking of. Yeah, what do you think of the great music?
Is Grayson singing?
Yes, he's on our line.
He's gonna do some Lacey Ducey for us on the piano.
I just changed my whole perspective. No, that's good to know, okay.
Oh, I can't wait.
Will there be any classical music or chamber music or music of other kinds of venues or what, what's in the plan?
Andrew has handled the lineup for the most part, so.
Yeah, so we wanted to have like a, you know, not only people that were bringing the large crowds like Ben Lacey and Cory Cross, but we also wanted to bring in the local lineup. So that's why we're having the mayor perform, Bill and Leslie Penn. I'm trying to squeeze in there, do something with the trio. So there's a, that's gonna be a nice little eclectic mix. He's gonna be doing, you know, piano-based things. We're gonna have a bluegrass band that is tied to the, what are their names? They live in the Big Yellow House, Rob.
Drysters?
The, yeah, the Beckham County Ramblers, which has Isaac McBean as well. So it's gonna be a bigger eclectic mix. It's not gonna just be like rock and roll or, you know, jazz or those. It's gonna be a nice little mix of a little bit of everything. Everybody's bringing in something different.
So we will have classical music and chamber music?
Well.
Will you play it here?
That's a, that's a stretch. I mean, again, he's playing piano.
Well, listen, he's, he's gonna, he's gonna tell you his favorite singer is Bob Dylan, but the truth is, he's a big Nickelback fan, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. Let's change the music.
No, I'm gonna watch some votes on, I'm serious, man.
There you go, see? There you go.
So you did say you're gonna have both of them dead?
Yes, ma'am. A nice little eclectic mix of everything. Like my band will do a little bit of that. I know some of the other bands are, I mean, especially the headliners. Ben Lacey is greatest performer. That's not, I probably mean, that's not my thing. That's a great question. Who knows? He's fantastic. So he does a little bit of, literally, you can throw out a song. It doesn't even matter what song he is playing. Better than the first degree, but it's insane, so.
So Alicia, the Midsummer Nights in Midway is not happening? This, like the one in June, one in July?
No.
Okay, so this one kind of might fill that void a little bit, okay.
And are there gonna be other vendors and stuff?
Yes, I'm going to be having about twenty vendors. And we're looking at that from a cost, from a cost perspective. We've got patronage musicians and the sound and all those, those factors. So ideally, if we could find that sponsorship to not have twenty vendors, that would be my goal. But if we need vendors to have an aggressive capital.
I could add to the phone, you know, when you got other vendors. I don't think that'd be a problem. I'll make a motion to approve.
Hey, there a second?
Second.
Sarah, any more discussion, questions? All in favor? unanimous, all right?
Give me a break check.
Okay, a very requested here, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five, an ordinance clearing the city's intent. They annex seven point four eight acres of the property owned by Northside Homes LLC located at three fourteen North Winter Street into the current city boundaries.
Request.
Whereas Northside Homes LLC owns seven point four eight acres at three fourteen North Winter Street, adjacent to the city limits. And whereas the city desires to annex the property consisting of seven point four eight acres into the city limits, and the owner has consented to such annexation. And whereas the property to be annexed lies within the current Midway Urban Services boundary and is designated for urban uses in the current comprehensive plan. And whereas KRS one hundred dot two zero nine permits a city to amend its comprehensive plan and zoning map to incorporate and establish zoning or other land use regulations where property proposed for annexation prior to the adoption of the annexation ordinance. And whereas, in light of the size and location of the property to be annexed and its potential importance to the future growth and development of the city, the city council has determined that it could be appropriate to utilize the routine described in KRS one hundred point two zero nine prior to the final action upon the ordinance of annexation. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Midway Kentucky as follows. Section one, this ordinance expresses the intention of the city of Midway to annex all of that real estate contained within the boundary set out in section two of this ordinance. Section two, in accordance with KRS eighty-one A dot four, point four two zero, the city of Midway hereby expresses intent to annex the property consisting of seven point four eight acres at three fourteen North Winter Street and being described in the attached exhibit A. Section three, if it's desirable to annex the property described in section two above, because it is contiguous to city boundaries and the owner's plan to utilize the property for urban uses requiring provision of city services and it is suitable for development for urban purposes without unreasonable delay. Section four, no part of the property is included within the boundary of another incorporated city. Section five, upon the adoption of this ordinance, the Versailles Midway Woodford County Planning Commission is directed to hold a public hearing in accordance with KRS one hundred point two zero nine one for the purpose of making its recommendations to the city as to the zoning or other land use regulations which will be effective for the property upon its annexation. Section six, this ordinance shall become effective after passage and upon publication required by law. And then, of course, this is just an intent annex. This isn't even the annexation ordinance yet. Is there a motion to adopt the intent annex? Motion. Love them, is there a second? Stacy, any further discussion, questions about this? Okay. Sarah, yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 It's five zero. All right. Next, we'll move on to the later, later meetings to the actual annexation process. And again, and again, this is solely to, you know, it's twofold. This is to make sure that the Woodford County Fiscal Court is not the agent making this decision. And then instead, it's the Midway City Council, which even the court agrees proper. And it's also to, for us, regardless of what happens at the zoning, whether it's up or down, whether it's a yea or nay, at the end of the day, it's been a section of the city that's been driving us crazy for a long time. A former council member called me as soon as she first heard about all this and said, if no matter what, at least get that annexed into the city because it's driven us crazy for years where the owner, previous owners used to let the grass grow higher than they wanted to in the jungle and we couldn't police it because we're in the city. So it helps clean up the boundary a little bit too, regardless of what happens in the future. All righty, I don't have anything else to add unless there are any committed reports tonight. Okay, closing comment time. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good spring is here and we're all gathered again. I'm very grateful.
There.
Well, I'm Sarah. It's my first meeting here and it's been pretty interesting.
Get your picture with your nameplate.
I see.
Stacy, I'll go to you last, so I don't get yelled at by anybody. So I may have to.
Um, no, I'm glad to be back in city halls. It's nice to see everybody. There was a suggestion to me that we, I know we're in transition right now, but getting the meetings on YouTube and having a YouTube channel, which I think it would be good to have another avenue for people to watch if they're not, if they don't want to be on Facebook, because a lot of people don't. And I don't blame them.
We can do that. YouTube.
Yeah, earlier was mentioned the need assessment. I know that's something I think you had mentioned about doing with the, the housing task force. Is that something you are still planning on looking into?
Yes, I'm actively, I spoke with someone today. It, that is something I want to pursue. I don't know how much it's gonna cost. That's the big question and how thorough it can be. But once I have that data, I have to bring it through all and hopefully we can move forward.
Good.
Yeah.
That'd be great. That's all I got.
I'm like everybody else, just going to be out of house in here. Two people actually personally, I'm not sure where Steve is at, but hopefully he's doing okay. I've been barking a whole lot and then he was really tired by then. Right, other than that, Mary? This was one of our shorter meetings. You can practice, you know, or whatever you like. Any motion?
Let's go to Darren for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Thank you.